You're watching WSTV Digital Media.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the January 11, 2018 meeting of the City County Planning Board. Would you please stand and join us for a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Today's meeting is being broadcast live on some TV digital media. It'll be rebroadcast at 10:00 a.m. Friday morning and again at 4:00 p.m. Sunday afternoon. Our first order of business today is consent agenda. These are items for which petitioner has requested withdrawal or continuance, or items for which staff has recommended approval, and no one has signed up to speak in opposition. For public hearings today, each side will have a total of 12 minutes. There is no rebuttal period. Once the public hearing is closed and the board goes into work session, no one's permitted to speak unless a planning board member asks a question. For general use district zoning, the board must consider the full range of uses allowed in the zoning district. Therefore, you may not refer to specific use. For special use district zoning, however, you must very specifically describe the intended uses and how the site will be developed. Items under Section B of our agenda require final approval by the elected officials. As such, votes taken today will go forward to those bodies for their consideration. If you're addressing the board today before you begin your remarks, please give us your name, address, and zip code for the record. The first item of business is approval of the minutes. We've had a slight change in the way the minutes are being written, so we think it's appropriate to put this off and discuss it at our work session in January. So I'd like to go ahead and move a continuance of that item until the January work session.
Second?
Second, Mr. Younger in discussion. Those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. Now call on Aaron King for Senator's consent agenda.
All right. First item's item B1. It's zoning docket F-1571, and this is a request to rezon about 9.15 acres from Ag to general business, special use zoning, and SEDA. We did receive a withdrawal request for this. It came in by the deadline for automatic withdrawal, so this has been withdrawn. No vote is needed. I will say that we did receive a new submittal for this that added some land, so you will have another case on this coming to you at your February meeting for consideration. Next item's B2. It's zoning docket F-1572, and this is a request to rezon about eight and a half acres from residential multifamily, eight units per acre zoning, special use zoning, to RS-20 special use limited zoning. You can see the site there in yellow. It's on the north side of Old Salem Road, south of I-40, in between, I guess, 66 would be back over to the east, and Union Cross would be back over to the west. It's zoned RM8S presently, and it was originally part of Angus Ridge Development, which is the entirety of the RM8S development that you see there. It was originally, in that proof plan from the commissioners, basically just shown as undeveloped land. There was no development proposed for this piece of property. This request would remove it from Angus Ridge Development and basically make it its own standalone RS-20L lot. We do have some conditions associated with this. The access would be from Wilchester Lane, which is in the existing subdivision here, and one key consideration is there's a condition that only one single-family home could be built on this eight and a half acres. We reviewed this, and the balance of what's left of the RM8S development does comply with UDO requirements with respect to density and watershed impervious calculation, so if this is approved and taken out, what's left over will stand on its own and meet UDO requirements. So staff has reviewed this, and we would recommend approval of this RS-20L request.
Anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Senator, now declare the public hearing closed.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lamb, second. By Mr. Groves, in discussion?
Yes.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. First of all, I just want to make sure that the signs were posted in time.
Yes.
Okay. And I wanted to ask about the greenway access. My understanding is that there would be a greenway easement on both sides of Abbott's Creek, but I wanted to see, and also if there would be access to that greenway through Wilchester Lane.
Correct. And that was part of the...
I just wanted to see where that would go, you know, on the property.
So this is Wilchester Lane here, and this is Abbott's Creek, and this is the subject property in this area. So there's the location of that 20-foot pedestrian access easement to the greenway.
And so if we approve this, then that is a condition on that site that goes with the site? In other words, it's not negotiable?
It's actually already recorded. We've got a deep-looking page there.
Okay. And then the other question I had had to do with, the staff report mentioned that some buffers that were part of the original approval.
Yeah. So when this was originally rezoned, there was a perimeter buffer yard that was required because you have RM8 zoning versus RS-20 zoning, so that would be along the western perimeter of this site. Rather than move that buffer down to the creek bed here, the applicants have agreed to install that buffer where it was originally shown on that plan that was approved by the commissioner. So that buffer yard would have to be installed along that western perimeter prior to any COs being issued on this property.
And the western perimeter, could you point that out on the map?
Yep. So along that heavy red line, that's where that buffer yard was originally...
There's still one.
Oh, sorry. My bad. Yep. So if you can follow the mouse, it's along that heavy red line there. That's where the buffer yard would be installed. That's where it was originally shown on the plan approved by the commissioners.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any questions? I do need to be excused, Ms. Butler. I happen to live in that neighborhood and remember that Homeowners Association, so whereas any other discussion, have a motion for approval. Those in favor? And as opposed, that's unanimous. Thank you.
Next item is B4. It's UDO 284. This is the text amendment the staff is working on to establish building material requirements for the use of retail store. We wanted to do a little bit more outreach on this, so we've requested continuance for one more month, automatic continuance to your February meeting. And we will come back and tackle the preliminary subdivision 2017079. We're going to catch that at the end of the public hearings. So the next item for your consideration will be B2, and Gary Roberts will make that presentation.
So B3.
B3, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Next item on your agenda is zoning docket F-1573. Petitioner is Shirley Hester, and it's 15.93 acres located on the southwest side of Goodwill Church Road, west of Piney Grove Road. And the request is a special use rezoning request from AG Agricultural, where the minimum lot size is 40,000 square feet, to RS-30S, where the minimum lot size is 30,000 square feet for a 19-lot, single-family subdivision. This is Legacy's Growth Management Plan. It's located in the darker green area, the growth management area five, a portion, the northeast portion of Forsyth County, north of Curresville and east of Walker Town, northeast of Walker Town. And this is a zoning map showing the subject property, highlighted in yellow there. It's currently undeveloped. It abuts the Deer Path subdivision on two sides there, to the south and west. You have Goodwill Church Road located here, and there at the intersection of Piney Grove Road, located there where Deer Path Lane accesses into that neighborhood. So existing Deer Path is zoned RS-30, which is what the request is for. You have agricultural to the north, some RS-40, smaller subdivision there that was rezoned several years ago, across the street, and then agricultural further to the south. Aerial photograph showing the subject property and development pattern. It's predominantly wooded. The front portion has been farmed there, closer to the intersection of Goodwill Church And these images are taken on site. This is looking from Goodwill Church Road into the subject property. You have the Deer Path neighborhood there in the background, behind those trees, again on Goodwill Church Road, subject properties to the left. And within the Deer Path neighborhood, this is looking along Deer Path Lane, Stag Meadow Lane there is to the left, and this is also there, looking into Stag Meadow Lane, into the subject property. So this is one of the stub streets that was laid out in 1986 to connect to the subject property for furthering of this development, so that's where the site will connect in at that location. Then at the end of Whitetail Lane, looking pretty much northwest, northeast, excuse me, into the subject property, so that's another place where the site would connect into the subject property. Deer Path, as I mentioned, it was approved in 1986. It was a 91-lot subdivision at that time, and as with now, no sewer is provided, but there is public water. It's 91 lots. There's been some reconfiguration and combination, but predominantly, that's the way it looks now out on the street at this time. The dots, the green dots, are 11 lots that are actually greater than 30,000 square feet. At this time in 1996, 1986, it was all zoned R6 in this area, and then when the UDO was adopted in '95, this was then zoned RS-30. But the 11 lots shown in green, those are lots that are greater than 30,000 square feet. The rest of the lots are all less than 30,000 square feet. So about 80% of the lots that were approved in Deer Path are actually smaller than what we're talking about today on the subject property here that I've identified in this area here. Also, the development was laid out with public streets and not a closed system by any means. It was laid out with five public street stubs to the adjacent properties shown there in orange, including the two stubs that go into the subject property. However, currently, this development only has one way in and one way out here on Piney Grove Road. This is the subject property here, the proposed subdivision layout. You have Deer Path Lane to the south and existing Stag Meadow, as I mentioned earlier. There'll be a continuation of Whitetail Lane that will then connect onto Goodwill Church Road, and at staff's request, they have provided another stub to the north into this undeveloped property here along Goodwill Church Road. There's 19 lots. Again, they're all actually larger than the originally approved lots along Deer Path Lane. All of the bank of lots that I was showing on this previous image on Whitetail, those are all 100 by 200 foot, so those are actually 20,000 square foot lots for the original approval, and these are larger than that. They had 20 lots here, but providing the stub, they did lose a lot, so it's 19 lots now. Very comparable, really, from a traffic standpoint to the existing zoning, only two more lots. This only gives them two more lots, so 163 trips under the current zoning and 182 vehicular trips is anticipated under the proposed zoning. So really not much difference in traffic than what could one expect under the current development of AG on the property. So really good, excellent interconnectivity and connectivity to adjacent properties. There's no cul-de-sacs. It provides Deer Path with another access in case there's some emergency situation, utility break, having another access onto a minor thoroughfare, which is what Goodwill Church Road, is always a good planning principle. So it gives greater connectivity for this development, gives people multiple choices on exiting and entering the neighborhood. Backing out just a little bit, a good visual. This is the subject property again in yellow. You have Piney Grove and Goodwill Church Road here, Highway 158. So it is in the rural area, but it's not really in the middle of a completely uniformed area. You do have some other RS-30 to the south, the Whispering Pines neighborhood, a good area of RS-30, some undeveloped RS-30 zone property on the other side of Reedsville Road, and some acreage here across 158, further to the northwest, some RS-40 over here. So a lot of AG agricultural again, but it's really connected right up to this RS-30. It just provides a logical continuation of this development, which was really set up for the adjacent properties to be developed similarly. The proposed site plan is compatible with the existing Deer Path neighborhood. The site has access onto a minor thoroughfare, and it serves with public water. Proposed trip generation, as I mentioned, is comparable to what could be expected under the current zoning, and the proposed street pattern is excellent in regard to connectivity with no cul-de-sacs. So staff recommends approval, and the site plan meets UDO requirements, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Included in our materials was a 2007 collector's street plan.
Yes.
And I just wanted to make sure I understood properly what was shown there. Is the road proposed to be realigned?
Goodwill Church would be terminated prior to its connection now with Piney Grove, and so obviously, if this was approved, that termination would be east of that connection.
So this development would result in the change in the road configuration in that location?
This development would not, no. And that was a conceptual design, so construction documents aren't done until there, you know, there's money in the pipeline to do the project, which there's not at this point.
But the proposal is to realign it as shown?
The dotted...
The dotted, okay.
That's what the thoroughfare plan is suggesting.
Right. Okay. I just want to make sure.
Any other questions of staff this time? Okay. This is a public hearing. The first person signed up is Mike Turner. Looks like Mr. Turner.
Not Mike Turner.
Okay.
Steve Causey, Allied Design, 4720 Kestrel Mill Road, Winston-Salem, 27103. Mike Turner is here, and he will be available to answer questions if he needs to. We did work with the developer to prepare the site plan. The layout was pretty obvious or intuitive. We knew we had to connect the streets. We did work with Gary to add an additional stub up to the north. I think that all worked pretty well. Not really a lot I can add to what he just explained. I don't think he mentioned, but we did have a neighborhood meeting, the developer did. I think you've got a summary of what he shared at that meeting in your packet, but a neighborhood meeting was held. Again, pretty much here to answer any questions. Mike is here, and we have a couple of residents from the adjacent neighborhood that are here if you have any questions of them as well.
Thank you, Mr. Causey. Justin Lentz would like to speak.
I just wanted to go out of this meeting with...
Give us your name and address for the record, please.
Justin Lentz, 9332 Deer Path Lane. Justin Lentz at 9332 Deer Path Lane, Z-27284. And I think it's a good idea. We've had a lot of trouble with trees falling in the neighborhood and blocking almost three-quarters of the neighborhood off. I've been in the fire department for four years. I think that's kind of an issue with EMTs, anybody that has to get in there for emergency services, to be able to get in there. We have to deal with trees in the snow, heavy rain, stuff like that. It's just a good safety measurement to have another exit entrance, and I don't see any problem with having any more residential housing around the area. I think it's a good idea.
Thanks, sir. Wesley Lentz.
Yeah, Wes Lentz, 9332 Deer Path Lane. But basically, same thing as my son was saying, we've had a lot of problems over the years with the trees falling. We've got out there with our chainsaws and had to clear it. Recently, the fire department had to clear it to get access in, and it wouldn't really hurt anything for another access into our neighborhood.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak in support of this? Okay, then we'll turn to the opposition. Art Coleman.
Art Coleman, 9505 Whitetail Trail, Kernersville, 27284. And my house is one house away from the proposed expansion of the subdivision to include a Phase III of the Deer Path. I am opposed to this expansion. I purchased my property in 1989 and selected the location that was right next to a cul-de-sac, very quiet and secure, never knowing that this would potentially be the beginning of a Phase III expansion. The proposal includes larger lots and larger houses than currently available in Phases I and II. Had I known that an expansion was possible, I would have probably selected another property instead of the one where I currently reside. When I first moved into the neighborhood during the early 1990s, there were several attempted and actual home break-ins, and those incidents occurred at the front of the subdivision. They never occurred any further back into the subdivision, and I'm convinced that the reason they never went back any further was because there was only one way in and one way out. This will no longer be the case, as Whitetail Trail will be extended to intersect with Goodwill Church Road. Now there will be two entrances to the subdivision to make it easier for any criminals to enter via one entrance and exit through the new entrance. This may actually encourage criminal activity, as they will be able to slip in one entrance and out the other and not really be detected. This is also going to create additional traffic on Whitetail Trail, where there are several families along there that have young children that play in their yards when the weather permits, and now there will be more of a danger to the children. While I obviously don't have children, those that do will no longer be assured that it is safe for them, since Whitetail Trail will now be a through street and not just the dead end. I believe that the new Phase III will be an extreme disadvantage to the existing homeowners when they decide that it is time to sell their properties in the future. When a potential buyer sees larger lots and newer, larger homes based on the 19 proposed new home sites, they will be less likely to consider the smaller, older houses with smaller lots. The developer has indicated he is leaving a 30-foot buffer of trees between Phase II and Phase III, which is no real buffer in my estimation. He also has indicated that home values in his previous developments in Kernersville have increased in property value for the existing homes in the subdivision, but there is no guarantee that this will happen in Deer Path. At the meeting to introduce the proposal to the neighborhood, the developer was asked if he would be willing to extend the county water line further down Whitetail Trail, and indicated that cost would be prohibitive. If he will not or cannot extend the water line, I would encourage the planning board to request that the county extend the water line through the remainder of the neighborhood. Right now, it ends before Buck Forest Drive. There was only a certain number of home sites in the subdivision at the time that the request was presented, whether or not you wanted to participate in having county water delivered or whether you wanted to stay with Aqua, North Carolina. Everybody at the back of the end, at the back of the neighborhood, there was not enough people interested in paying the money upfront to allow that extension. And right now, we're going to have public water at the beginning and public water at the end, and nothing for the remainder of the neighborhood. This would at least allow consistent water delivery for the entire neighborhood. I want to take the opportunity to thank the board for allowing me to speak and to voice my opposition to this proposed expansion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Could I just him to point out exactly on the map where he does reside there?
Right here.
Okay. Second to the last lot there.
Yes. The last lot was put up for sale, sold in a day, and that was before it was known that this expansion was being proposed. So that new neighbor doesn't know he's going to have expansion coming his way. You may know by now.
Sean Stewart.
About seven and a half minutes.
I'm Sean Stewart. I live at 9513 Whitetail Trail, and I sent a message to you all yesterday that outlined a lot of my concerns, and I included some pictures too. The picture you also saw this evening at the end of Whitetail Trail was misleading because it is a cul-de-sac there. It is a circle at the end of Whitetail Trail. It's not a stub road. It doesn't look like that. When I bought my house three years ago, I didn't realize there would ever be anything beyond that circle at the end of Whitetail Trail. That was the reason why I bought my home. And we brought our two kids down here just because we wanted to live on a dead-end road where they could ride bikes and play safely. And when you look at the pictures that I included, I didn't bring it so I could put it under the screen here tonight. If you look at Whitetail Trail, it is very narrow. It's only one lane. It's barely one lane. If you allow more traffic on that road, it's going to be very dangerous for me to get in and out of my driveway and the other neighbors who live at the end of Whitetail Trail. I suspect that the new road for the new neighborhood is going to be wider than what Whitetail Trail currently is, and it's going to lead to an unsightly bottleneck where the circle at the end of Whitetail Trail is currently located. In what I sent, I included a quick mock-up of how the site map could be adjusted slightly and include a cul-de-sac at the end of his drawings. And in the community meeting, he said that it was expensive for him to run the road all the way down to where ours is anyway, and that he didn't really want to do that to begin with. So it seems like there's some kind of a compromise that could be found, at least in this one area, related to my opposition. But just generally speaking, we haven't had that many issues with trees down and not being able to get out of the neighborhood since I've been here. I have seen that trees have been down, and people have chainsaws in the neighborhood and can cut them and move them pretty easily. But the bigger issue I'm concerned about that the last gentleman mentioned was that crime has been increasing in our neighborhood. The neighbor in the house right beside me had his truck stolen just last year. Other neighbors have had a lot of car break-ins in the neighborhood, and right now, where it's one way in and one way out, most of us know who's coming in the neighborhood and who's leaving. And in spite of that, we're still dealing with some crime. But I'm afraid that if this road is, if Whitetail Trail is connected to Goodwill Church, that like the last person mentioned, we're going to have a much, much worse problem with crime, with a lot of people coming through the neighborhood that we don't know who they are or why they're there. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else care to speak? If not, now declare the public hearing closed. Board members, any questions, comments?
I had a question for transportation. Someone here from transportation who can speak. Yeah, I'm just to the point that was last made about the width of Whitetail Trail and maybe the new road. Do you happen to know if the new road is going to be wider than that? Or I'm just wondering if you see any safety issues with the roads that's wider going down to a more narrower road in terms of speeding and things like that.
Generally, in terms of speeding, no. Actually, with bottlenecks, you actually get a decrease in speed, which is naturally what you would want in a neighborhood. I don't know the exact measurements in terms of what the road is that they're proposing and what the current road is on the other neighborhood already existing is, but typically, usually when you see a bottleneck, it's better for traffic because it slows people down.
The proposed street width is 20 feet.
We know the current versus.
Eighteen.
It wouldn't be that big of a difference.
Okay. Thank you for clearing that up.
Any other questions?
I've got a question. Did you? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Hypothetically, I can understand the comment about the more entrances, the more it may encourage more crime, but I've never heard that there were any studies that proved that. Is that more conjecture?
Perhaps. And let me just also mention, that's a UDO requirement. So if you have property where a stub street comes into it, the UDO requires you to extend that street through your property unless there's topographic issues, stream crossing, something that makes that prohibitive. So when we look at this, this is clearly set up for this, and the UDO actually requires that, that there's not really a lot of debate. And since they've demonstrated that connection can be made, it's a requirement of ordinance. So just wanted to get that out there.
Again, that was put in the ordinance for public safety response purposes there, as well as giving people choices there in terms of how to get in and out of a neighborhood.
And just, it's, the connectivity index hasn't been in the ordinance that long, but the requirement for stub streets and the extension thereof has been in the ordinance since the original subdivision was constructed, and therefore, that's why the stubs are there.
Motion for Mr. Grubbs, second Mr. Lamb, comment?
Yeah, I was just going to say, my biggest regret with this is seeing the erosion of agricultural zoning and as we've tried to look at that in Forsyth County and try to figure out creative ways to do this, and this, of course, goes in the face of that. But clearly, from the way it was laid out from the original developer, there was an expectation that this was going to happen at some point. I do hope that the community will look toward ways to keep farmland and have development at the same time, so we can keep some of that important aspect of open space.
And just piggybacking on that, I wanted to ask a question, maybe of Chris or Aaron or Gary, one of you can answer this. The decision to stub it out to the north, to that empty agricultural land, obviously that's going to encourage more residential development in contradiction to what the area plan and the legacy recommendation that you quoted in your staff report says, you know, do not rezone property to more intense districts. So there is a conflict there between the connectivity desires and then area plan and the legacy. So how did you reconcile those two? And really, my question is, are we, where do we draw the line? I mean, where in this larger map that Mr. Roberts showed, are we going to draw the line? Where do we want to keep the agricultural land?
Yeah, so we definitely considered that, and I think with respect to the stub street that's being proposed to the north, I think we kind of have an obligation to ask for that to happen, because that land could develop under the ag zoning that's there now for a subdivision, and we would want interconnectivity here. So I think we have a responsibility to find a place on that vacant property where there is good togo, so that that street network can continue. So that's why we asked for that stub, that stub street there. I don't know so much that it sets the, you know, that it definitely requires that that's going to be rezoned to RS-30 or something in the future. I don't know that that's been cast at this point, based on where that stub's shown there. But I think when we looked at this, at this request, we definitely felt this was reasonable, given the surrounding zoning pattern and the way that the stub streets and the lighting pattern was set up going into this piece of property.
This is really notched in, in between this other RS-30 and RS-40 zoning. So I think we would be looking at it differently if it was an isolated tract that was in the middle of AG and they're proposing a brand-new subdivision that was RS-30 or even 20 or whatever, or if this was 200 acres that was developing as RS-30. But given the size and the shape and the configuration of this, it just seemed more, much more logical to have this be an extension of the existing RS-30.
Yeah, I understand that logic. I was just wondering about the logic of putting the stub to the north, whether or not that would be encouraging more development that's kind of in contrast to what the area plan
Any other comments, questions? We have a motion for approval. Those in favor? Opposed, that's unanimous.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. The next item is UDO 285. Petitioner is Planning and Development Services staff at the request of City Council, and this request would revise regulations for existing accessory dwellings previously approved by the Board of Adjustment. Just as a little bit of background, in 2017, council revised standards for accessory dwellings in Winston-Salem with UDO 267. Before this amendment, detached units were permitted through the Board of Adjustment special use permit process. Most SUPs included expiration dates, after which time a unit would only be allowed if its permit was renewed. This permit renewal process included a new public hearing and adjacent property owner notification as well, to ensure that the neighborhood continued to be comfortable with the presence of the unit. Currently, all new ADUs in Winston-Salem must be approved by council through the special use rezoning process, and the language that council approved for new accessory units did not address the existing previously approved units with expiring permits. The only current option for these units is to apply for rezoning from the council, which can be difficult and expensive, especially if council chooses to deny the existing units. So what this amendment would do is allow existing units that were already approved by the Board of Adjustment with expiring terms to continue being reviewed by that board rather than by the council. 64 units have been approved by the board in the past with permit expiration dates that have yet to pass, and these units could take advantage of this proposal. To protect neighborhoods, this amendment would also allow the Board of Adjustment to grant renewal terms of no more than 10 years for these units. In other words, they couldn't grant permanent approval to these units. And this provision was put in there after some discussion with council at the committee meeting, because this gives an opportunity for citizens to periodically testify on the upkeep and appropriateness of these units through that aforementioned special use permit public hearing process. One last point, if a unit no longer meets its conditions of approval, the Board of Adjustment could deny renewal of that special use permit, and the unit would become illegal. Also, units with lapsed permits would also become illegal after their permit expired. So with that, the staff does recommend approval, but I'll be glad to answer any questions.
So what would happen if the unit became illegal?
If the unit became illegal, they would have to cease operation. If we found out that they were operating illegally, we could start work on citing them, fines, things of that nature. And if it was a mobile home or something like that, it wouldn't be out of the realm of consideration that the board could actually request that they remove that unit from the property.
Kirk, you mentioned that the board could put a limit of no more than 10 years on renewals. Do you happen to know what the typical period that they normally use in these cases is? Is it less than that?
I don't know. Chris, you want to answer?
Yeah, I can. Mr. Leake was on the Board of Adjustment whenever we started this transition. We had some discussions with council a couple of years ago and with the manager's office about potentially getting away with, or getting away from having time limit caps on special use permits. Through that discussion with the manager's office and some informal polling with city council, it was felt like that doing away with the time limit in and of itself was not something that could be supported, but we could look at doubling that. Generally, the time limit was, a renewal was required every five years. Over the last two and a half years, we've gone to a more, it's not always 10 years. If there's a reason, if there's some testimony provided at the public hearing, it can be shorter, but we haven't granted any with a status longer than 10.
Let me follow up on that. Having attended some ZBAs, and it'd be interesting for those of you that have to go through them all the time, I realize that when you do, when you do have one of those occasions where you're approving a whole bunch of them at one time, there's always a percentage that are neglected. And you're looking at it and say, well, wait a minute, their electrical box isn't fixed up, or the porch has fallen apart, or something like that. How bad is that percentage in there? Is it 2% of all the ones that come up in hearing? Or is it so rare that this 10 years isn't going to matter?
Well, again, keep in mind, you know, whenever you come to the zoning Board of Adjustment, the ones that are being renewed aren't necessarily secondary. So you have manufactured homes that are the principal uses, and you have secondary uses, and there are only 64 secondary. Not all of those are manufactured homes. But to answer your question, we have, there's a general provision, the UDO, that requires those and a condition that the board imposes that they be maintained. But keep in mind, minimum housing issues and those kind of things are also addressed by community development. So if there's an issue with maintenance on a manufactured home, a stick-built dwelling, whether it be secondary or primary, there is a specific department that can handle that. So I don't know what a percentage would be, but there's a requirement that they be maintained, but the actual maintenance of those units is actually handled through community development.
And it sounds like that there would be a greater possibility it may maintain, since they're secondary. In other words, there's another property there that somebody's living in, or they're renting, or something like that. Okay, that helps me.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Is anyone like to speak in support of this? Anyone like to speak in opposition? Now declared the public hearing closed. That's the wishes of the board. Move for approval. Motion by Mr. Leake, second by Mr. Lamb. Any discussion? Those in favor? The opposed, that's unanimous.
Okay, last item is item C1. This is subdivision 2017-079. This is the Bartram Place subdivision. It's a seven-lot subdivision over on Bartram Road, Bartram Place, kind of east of Renolda. This board actually approved this preliminary subdivision layout at their September meeting of last year. When we looked at that, this is the approved site plan that the board approved, when we reviewed that case back in September, keep in mind, no, not a lot of work had been done. We didn't have a lot of information on the Stormwater part of it. So Stormwater staff erred on the side of wanting to be cautious, because this site, it abutted a single-family property where we have residents there. And so we wanted to err on the side of caution. And so we, the developer agreed to show some, a dried attention pond located in this, I guess, northeast corner of the property that you see there in that red circle. It was going to discharge and go right back into this lot and this location. This is the condition that the board approved at that time, and I'm not going to read all of it. The relevant part is really the last sentence where it talks about providing management for the 210, 25, and 50-year peak events, as well as a 50-year volume increase. So that's what the board approved back in September. What has happened since September is that the developer's engineer has gone on and done the detailed stormwater engineering. They've done a downstream study to examine the site, the water runoff that comes off of it, and what happens downstream. And the net effect of that is that there's very little impact to those downstream property owners. And so what is before you today is a request to remove that dried attention pond from the site plan and come back, basically with what you see here. Let me note a couple of things. To put that pond in, the developer's going to have to remove quite a bit of trees, about half an acre of trees in that location, so that the net effect of not putting the pond in is that we get to retain some of those trees in that area. Stormwater staff has reviewed the study that's been presented, and they're comfortable with what's shown in that. They're comfortable with removing the dried attention pond, and they feel like the downstream property owners are adequately protected without that pond. So again, what's before you today is the proposed site plan that's on the screen there, and it would be accompanied by the revised condition that you have in front of you, which says, "Developers shall submit and have approved a stormwater management permit application that addresses all applicable water quality and water quantity provisions of Chapter 75 of the City Code." So staff is supportive of this. I do want to bring Joe Fogarty up from Stormwater to maybe say a couple of words about his review of this and what he found in that study, if that's acceptable to the board.
Yeah, I'm Joe Fogarty with the Stormwater Division. And as Aaron said, at the time of the original planning board approval, we did not have any detailed stormwater analysis done on the site, so we did err on the side of caution. And again, as Aaron said, the developer's engineer has since come back and provided me with a no adverse impact study, downstream study, which has studied pretty much till into the adjacent property and then two further study points downstream. The net effect of that study, he studied everything up to the 100-year event. So typically, most stormwater conveyances downstream are designed only to handle the 10-year event. But his study has gone up to the 100-year event, and at the max, we're seeing a .1 feet increase in runoff. We're talking about an inch. The developer has worked with the downstream owner, Mr. Guzenhauser. He's, that property owner allowed the developer onto his property to survey for the study and to also clean out the existing pipe. And from what the developer's engineer has told me, that downstream property owner has no concerns with eliminating a dried attention pond. I think one other thing that should be pointed out is if a dried attention pond goes in, there would be a requirement for homeowners association to be set up, and that would have to be maintained in perpetuity. And based on just the very, very slight increase, in fact, no adverse impact, I just feel that, or staff feels that it's really not necessary to have a dried attention pond.
Of course, I felt really good about this when it came through, the first time seeing a stormwater pond there and knowing what effect the development behind Bartram Road and Old Town it had on Lake Catherine and all of that, which was a disaster. Where does this water run, then?
The water will go into the adjacent property to the...
Does it slope down toward the back? Is that what it is?
So it's basically, comes out the back of the property here and goes through to Guns and Hauser's residence. There is a pipe going under his driveway, and then after that, it gets into a street conveyance system, and it has pipe all the way to the stream back here. Chuck, if you want to explain more?
I can, yeah, if you want me to.
But it's basically downstream, it's almost in a pipe system the whole way till it daylights into the next available stream.
And then that stream runs into the streams that run into Lake Catherine and...
And then it runs into a major creek that's...
Okay.
Come up to the microphone, sir, and give us your name, if you would, please.
Hello, my name is Chuck Truby, CPT Engineering and Surveying, Inc., and we're located at 4400 Tining Street in High Point, North Carolina. And just, can I give you a little history on why, and I'm sorry, we didn't get the condition written properly the first time, but when we started the project, we didn't have all the data that we really should have had before we came to you the first time. There was a pipe that, I don't know if you all had an opportunity to drive through there, but there's beautiful houses in there, and there's an existing driveway that run...
You can point on the mouse if you need that.
Can I bring the light plan back up? I don't think you're going to get the whole picture.
I don't know if you can tell from this, this is the plan that accompanied the study. So you're talking about where does it discharge to? Here is discharge point from the site going off the screen. Here is the actual development. And from there, it goes into the Guzenhauser's property, into this existing 36-inch pipe under God's Wordy Drive. From there, it's piped in a 36-inch pipe until it ultimately comes out in a 42-inch pipe to the stream here, which is the end of the study. At that point, it's into an open stream conveyance.
Okay, okay. Back, back to, can we bring the site plan up? Okay. And I can use this, this pointer, right?
Yes.
Okay. If, if you look at this right here, this is an existing driveway, and I'm, if you can follow my mouse, there's an existing driveway that comes around, turns, comes around, and then turns again and goes back and serves some of the most beautiful houses you'll ever see. And at the time, I knew there was a low point in this area right here, but we couldn't find a pipe that went under that drive. And we were, I could not for the life of me figure out where was this water going. Well, after we got the surveyors out there, my surveyors out there, we uncovered a pipe, and it hit, it was full of silt and roots and debris. So the first thing we did is we got it vacuum cleaned, and we got with the downstream property owner, Mr. Gunsenhauser, and asked for permission to get on his property so we could clean the pipe from his side. So at the time I submitted the plan originally, I didn't think I had a, a pipe, and if I did have a pipe, there wasn't much of a pipe, and I had to retain the water because I needed to control it to be able to make it work through a smaller pipe. Well, since we found out that we had an 18-inch pipe and we could clean it out, we were able to, we felt we didn't have a drainage problem. And then in talking with adjacent property owners and so forth, to build a dry detention basin in this area right here, and it is really wooded and beautiful, the people that were going to access, still using this driveway to get to their properties, are going to be looking at this ugly hole in the ground versus looking at woods. So it, and, and so I, so that's when I called the planning department. I said, guys, can I at least, let me study this thing and see if this development really is going to have any impact, because we're only talking about seven lots, and the, the increased impervious area is going to be minimal. And I said, if I can do a downstream study, you know, maybe we could do away with that dry detention basin and, and create a, a development that's going to be a lot nicer without it. And it was my professional opinion that the, the benefits of putting that dry detention basin in were so small versus the impact of cutting all those trees down would have. So that's when we went ahead and gathered all the field data needed, and this is the, this is the thickness of the report that we did. It was, it's very thorough, and it is my professional opinion that this development without that dry basin will not cause any downstream issues whatsoever. So the way the condition was originally written, I had to call the planning department and say, guys, the way it's written, I can't use the drought downstream, downstream study, even though it's in your ordinance, it says you can do either or. So we, that's why we're here trying to get the condition rewritten so we can use the study. And if you have any other questions, I can answer them for you.
Well, I mean, it is true that forest and, and trees and impervious surface will soak up some of the water, particularly if that's on the downside. I guess I'm asking the staff and, and you as being involved with the developer, how do we be assured that these trees will remain there and that they won't be turned into an open field or somebody's back lawn because they want a tennis court or a, or a soccer field or something like that for their kids? Is, is that a buffer? Could it be turned into a buffer now, or what is it?
I mean, it's our intent for that, for, you know, when, when they build the houses on these lots, and the builder is the developer. The intent would be, you know, you're going to build your house fairly close to the road, you'll have a lawn in the front, and then, you know, you're going to clear as little as possible because everybody likes trees for their houses. Now, I don't, I don't think we can restrict a homeowner into not cutting the trees down, but I don't know why they would.
Was there supposed to be a buffer that was running all along that side?
No, I mean, the buffers, keep in mind, it's just a standard single-family subdivision, so no buffers required. It gets a little tricky when you start placing conditions about retaining trees on individual, single-family lots that are getting transferred to owners down the road. The, the tree save requirement in the UDO for subdivisions doesn't even, does not, does not require the perpetual retention of tree save on individual lots. They have to be maintained until such time as the infrastructure is complete and work begins on the lot, but they don't have to be retained forever. So we generally don't want to have a condition on a lot that retain, that requires retention of trees.
This isn't viewed as a subdivision or whatever?
No, it is a subdivision, but even a major subdivision that has tree save requirements does not require those trees to be saved in perpetuity. It only requires those trees to be saved through the construction process, because again, the transfer of lot, well, it's either do, you know, you have to create a homeowners association, and then the trees have to be left on, in the homeowners association property. If you don't do that, then they're on individual properties, and then you have 40 different people that you're dealing with that decide to go out there and cut down their trees. So the, the tree save requirement for a major subdivision only requires that trees be retained until such time as the infrastructure is installed.
And then, Mr. Fogarty and, and folks, you don't have to get up, but you, you all are getting wiser and wiser about erosion and issues like that that are occurring, because that's when a lot of this happened before, was during the, the building phase. And, and just staying on top of that, I guess, the inspectors and the, both the state and the city.
Yeah, erosion is obviously one of the concerns, too. It's not just flooding, and we're becoming more acutely aware of, of those issues. And the ordinance that was adopted in 2008 has gone above and beyond to try and address those concerns. A lot of the erosion issues we see in our city and county today are issues that we've inherited prior to 2008 and the adoption of that ordinance.
Okay.
Got a question as far as your study goes. It would still be valid whether it was grass, trees, or whatever the surface is in terms of your study as far as the runoff and the water being, it's not going to change?
Yeah, I mean, basically what changes is, and I don't want to get too technical, but there's a curve number, which is kind of a number that's used for the program for a wooded site versus a subdivision. And the curve numbers that we use for, were for lots that are half an acre or smaller, and these lots are actually even bigger than that. So we were even a little more conservative on that. But, but, but there's numbers established that assumes that it's a subdivision, it's fully developed.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Anyone care to make a motion?
Don't we have one?
No, okay.
Move approval.
A second.
Mr. Lamb, second, Ms. Smith. Any, any further discussion? Those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Staff reporting.
Okay. And Happy New Year, everyone. I hope everyone had great holidays there, and I guess we're back to work with our two-meeting-a-month practice here, at least through October. And so just to give you an update on our cases coming up for the February 8th meeting, we have three zoning cases. One of them, which Aaron mentioned, is the return of the Crown Union Cross case. It got withdrawn today, but in an expanded fashion. And then we have two cases in the city that will be coming. And then we have the UDO 284, which got continued from this time, and that has to do with the building materials for retail buildings there. So that's what you're looking at for February. The other thing I want to do is hand you out our planning newsletter that just came out. Couple of things in there. Every January newsletter I do, I write an article, and this one decided to write about our comprehensive plan. And that's something we want to continue to emphasize, that a comprehensive plan, once it gets done, it doesn't just sit on the shelf. That is our, that is sort of our guide for what we are doing every, every year in terms of what the planning activities are, as well as what other departments are using as they're doing their work. So we're just doing a little review of, of things in there. There's been actually a lot of activity in the last four years, so I just summarized that a little, a little bit in a, in a general way. We're going to have a more detailed legacy progress report coming out later on this year. You know, as you recall, we do that every two years, so we'll be doing that this time. Then the other side is a article on our UDO code assessment processes going on with the help of a consultant. You all agreed that that was a good next step to take, and so the consultant has been on board. They had a number of meetings with a bunch of different people in December. And, and so they're going to come to the work session, actually, in January and give you all a little summary of what they're doing, where they are so far, and where, where they're heading. So, so you get a chance to hear some more about that, but this is a little summary of that in, in the newsletter. Oh, another little side note on legacy is I got invited to be part of a panel discussion at the National Planning Conference coming up in April. Since legacy won the Daniel Burnham Comprehensive Plan Award, they've invited some of the past winners to come back to say, okay, you won the Daniel Burnham Award, what are you doing to implement the plan? You know, so, so I'll be on the hot seat to, to explain what we've done, what hasn't gotten done, things, things like that. And let's see, work session, we are looking at the, of course, the UDO code assessment that I was just talking about. We will have Keith Huff there to talk about stormwater. So we had arranged that from your discussions of last fall, and then we'll have a few other items. So please reserve a good two hours for, for that, for that work session. We'll have to hit the road with, with a number of items there. And that is it for staff report.
Okay, thank you. Any board members, anything here for the-
Let me just say that this is a really nice headshot of you.
It is.
Really pretty. Well. For the board, we'll leave. Wish Gary happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
All right, Ms. Smith, I believe it's your turn.
All right, it's a motion to adjourn. Happy New Year, here we go.
Adjourn, right.